Okay, it is seven o'clock, so I am going to call the May third school board meeting to order. If the opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Happer-Horsham District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slander statements expressed by any member of the public. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. If we could stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Ms. Shans, could we please have roll call? You are on mute still.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Jim Wilson. David Brown.
Here.
Teresa Brown.
Here.
Tara Connor-Hosten.
Here.
Eric Coons.
Here.
Susan Hunsinger-Hoff.
Here.
James Greenhall. Marion McCow.
Here.
Denise Schultz.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. So up first, we have a presentation from Keith Valley Middle School National Junior Honor Society by Mr. Kircher, Ms. Miller, and Ms. Faze.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. It's an outstanding opportunity we have here tonight to share with the board an update and about the wonderful work that our National Junior Honor Society has done over the past few years. So we first began our National Junior Honor Society Keith Valley in the 2013-14 school year by the induction of ninety members, and since then, we've inducted five hundred and fifty-seven students into our National Junior Honor Society, and we're set to induct sixty more in this coming June. To be in Nashville or be considered a member, you have to, a student has to have above an eighty percent in his or her sixth grade classes and an eighty-five percent in seventh grade classes. This includes all core area classes as well as phys ed, health, and our car rotation classes, our creative arts, meaning art, music, family consumer science, world language, those, those courses. And students also have to have completed fifteen hours of outside community service that could be performed, you know, with Boy Scout, Girl Scout troops, faith-based organizations. And they also, students have to participate in one school-sponsored sport or activity. And you're going to hear tonight from Shreve Alati, who's an officer in our NJHS, our National Junior Honor Society. He's going to tell you more, a little bit more about our chapter and the exciting work that they've been doing. So it's my honor and my privilege now to introduce Shreve to you.
Good evening, I'm Shreve Alati and an officer of the National Junior Honor Society. The NJHS is comprised of four pillars: scholarship, leadership, citizenship, citizenship slash character, and service. We feel as officers that the most important of these is service. Service is like the relevance of what we learn and like how we actually apply it to real life so that we can benefit our community in many ways. In order to maintain active membership within the Keith Valley NJHS, you must maintain a minimum of twenty hours of community service. Within the following presentation, you will be able to see some of the community service that the NJHS completed. Thank you. This past school year, the National Junior Honor Society realized that community service was needed more than ever.
Greg.
At first, it was a challenge for us to acquire some of these hours.
Yep, sorry, is it not playing correctly?
It was not viewing the, the screen.
Oh, which screen were you seeing? My, my mistake.
I'm seeing appear to be, you know.
Oh, okay. That was not the right screen. Uh, one moment, please. Sorry. Closed the wrong window. Here we go. So we're going to share screen two. Here. Are you seeing the video screen load here, the web dot Microsoft stream dot com?
It's loading, yep.
Okay.
There it is.
There we go.
This past school year, the National Junior Honor Society realized that community service was needed more than ever. At first, it was a challenge for us to acquire some of these hours. Due to safety reasons and guidelines, many organizations were not permitting individuals to volunteer during the pandemic. We had to think creatively, and with our present membership, we came up with many ideas. We organized and collected food for St. Catherine's Food Pantry as well as Lehman's Church. Both of these food pantries serve the Happer-Horsham community, and many of our members wrote emails and made phone calls to family and friends to generate donations to keep these locations stocked during this unprecedented time. In addition, we have with Hat Packs. Hat Packs is also a local organization that collects food for school-aged children that are in need of food beyond the school year and school day. With the help from one of our members, we organized a collection for the Veterans Hospital. Items donated include toiletries, laundry soap, mechanisms to help function independently, and everyday items that our veterans aren't able to obtain.
In addition, we decided that every member within our organization would create a cloud for Sarah Smiles Foundation. Sarah Smiles is an organization in memory of a young five-year-old girl, Sarah, who was diagnosed with a brain tumor and loved arts and crafts. She lost her courageous battle in two thousand and eight, and her legacy of hope and fun continues on for future patients who desire to also create arts and crafts. The entire membership created clouds for Sarah Smiles, and our cloud, Smiles, will be featured in the Cancer Center at Children's Hospital in Philadelphia. Usually, the clouds are contained in a packet of craft materials that is distributed to those patients that would like one during their hospital stay. But ours were able to become decoration for the patients to see.
Another member showed how they felt it would be nice to connect different students together for a common need since we're not attending school virtually. The students felt a peer tutoring program would be helpful. Reaching out to sixth-grade math teachers, we were able to match up NJHS members with sixth graders to help them with their math assignments. Tutoring takes place for half an hour once a week on teams after classes are finished. We continue to increase the amount of students participating and is helpful to everyone involved. Also, within Keith Valley, a few NJHS members are painting a butterfly wall mural to help beautify the school and spread a little cheer. They've been busy painting before school and have given up their lunchtime to work on this mural. It is almost complete. Another wonderful and unique community service idea shared by a member was Toad Detour. Toad Detour is an organization to help protect the local toad population around Roxboro and Philadelphia neighborhoods by setting up detours for cars to avoid hitting the toad's bell, manually moving toads from one side of the road to the other. Other community service completed included contributions towards Meals on Wheels, JRA, Jera Nature Center, HH Toy Drive, Wags, as well as two hundred PB&J sandwiches made for charity Bread Drop. We are also in the process of composing and creating Weathersize cards for residents at Luther Woods in Horsham. As you can see, we've been busy not only with our academics, but with serving our community with over seven hundred hours of community service.
So you can see our National Junior Honor Society students have been very busy throughout this pandemic school year. I certainly would like to give a shout out to Mrs. Faze, Mrs. Miller, and Mrs. Ginsburg, who have been very dedicated advisors to, to the, to the team. They've really worked hard with all of our students and Shreve and the officer team. You've done an outstanding job as well. And of course, you know, to the school board for your support, Dr. Everslog, Dr. Taylor, and Dr. King for their support as well. In fact, Dr. Taylor agreed today to be our keynote address speaker on our, during our June second induction ceremony coming up at Keith Valley. So that concludes our presentation, Dr. Everslog, back to you.
Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Kircher, and kudos to you and your team. Shreve, great job presenting tonight, well done. And you certainly represented your fellow NJHS students very well at KV. So thank you for your leadership and your service and great job all around. So our next presentation is by Dr. Bates and Dr. G, update on the English Language Arts Curriculum Review that's been going on for, it started this year, but it will continue for the next several years. It's really important work around the literacy experience that our students will have. So we will turn it over to Dr. G and Dr. Bates.
Thank you. And a good evening. Dr. G and I would like to share a little bit this evening about the work that we've started on our English Language Arts and Social Studies curriculum review. For those who are newer to the curriculum review cycles in Happer-Horsham, we have a regular cycle of content area reviews that are six years in length. This is year one for ELA, and our district, given our district's goals around deeper learning and some common overlapping standards for disciplinary literacy, we've decided to integrate social studies into the visioning process as well. The goal is to allow us to capitalize on our professional development opportunities and also create some cross-content opportunities for learners and the curriculum. We have the, we have several areas that we are considered to be important with this review. The first, of course, is about literacy as the critical foundation skill. So when we talk about English Language Arts, we are including the teaching of reading and writing and critical thinking. These are the most essential skills in schools as literacy development serves as the critical foundation for all learning. And we want to examine the degree to which our curriculum aligns with current research, best practices in terms of effective reading instruction. We want to assess the relevance of our resources and how they meet the needs of our diverse learners, and also to ensure that our instructional practices, both whole group and small group intervention, are aligned with evidence-based decision-making. As we maintain the review cycle even in a pandemic, we, we knew that postponing the review could have other kinds of implications. For example, if you extend licenses beyond their, their contract cycle, that can become a fiscal concern. And we also find that aging resources can go out of print. So for those reasons, and because we want to stay current, we launched the review a little earlier this year. And finally, given our district's commitment to equity, we must regularly evaluate current resources and instructional practices to be sure that we are teaching effectively. And by teaching effectively, we want to take a close look not only at resources, but whether our assessments and practices are supporting all learners to meet high levels of achievement in reading, writing, curriculum, and critical thinking, and the disciplinary literacies that align in social studies. Our review team is a very, well, our teachers in Happer-Horsham are always very invested in the curriculum and assessment process. So it was no surprise that when we recruited, we have close to fifty educators who have come out to participate in the review. And you can see that we have people who are participating from central office. We have principals, assistant principals, teachers at all grade levels, and representation from all of our departments and committees. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. G, and she's going to talk a little bit about the process.
Laura, thank you. So highlighted here are our beliefs. This comes directly from our board-approved curriculum review document, which highlights what year one should look like as part of the curriculum review process. So year one focuses on us developing a shared vision of literacy instruction, which as Dr. Bates noted, that's why it's so important to have a cross-section of individuals across the organization as part of this process. So you'll notice some words underlined there that, that, you know, are part of our beliefs, that we want a world-class curriculum that focuses on preparing students for post-secondary and career opportunities, that we want our curriculum to be viable, meaning it should align with those state standards, and we want it to be visible and accessible to everyone across the district, so all of our professional staff, and that we want it to be guaranteed, we should be able to ensure that what the curriculum that we are using and we've purchased, we've invested in, the intended curriculum that aligns with the standards is also the curriculum that we are, that we are implementing. So from this year, we really hope to use these beliefs to facilitate our development of a shared vision of how we identify the best practices in teaching and learning relative to literacy. Next slide. So these four boxes are at the core of our process. These are, we, we focus on these four areas because they align with our current district focus. If you look at student achievement, it's a clear focus as we want to ensure that all of our students are given access to a rigorous curriculum that's aligned with core standards, as I mentioned before, and that we're providing those foundational skills in reading and writing for students to reach their greatest potential. And when I think about how this connects to the classroom, you think about a first grader and what it looks like for them. And, and we've identified that, you know, a first grader needs to be able to show their understanding of basic ideas of print. A sixth grader needs to be able to evaluate the arguments and claims of a text. And then an eleventh grader needs to be able to analyze multiple interpretations of a story or a poem and evaluate how, how each, how each of those texts may even read together. And so you can kind of see how to that, how the alignment can connect to what we want to see for student achievement. So it's more than we want to see, than we want to see them do well on standardized tests, and that is a benchmark or a measurement that we can use. But ultimately, we want to connect back to those beliefs. We want them to be able to go out into the world and be able to really utilize these skills in, in the world. So then we look at deeper learning as, as one of these big buckets. And we're examining the opportunities that we give students to have real and authentic experiences in creating and using new knowledge beyond the classroom. So we're using that four shifts framework that we've presented before as we consider how deeper learning is reflected in English and Language Arts. And this might look like at a middle school classroom, students have some choice in their reading, it's self-directed, and so they have choice in their reading selection, but it is focused on some critical skills, such as identifying a point of view or theme, or viewing a text from multiple perspectives. In high school, an English teacher might invite their students to participate in exploring argumentative journalism, having students craft an original argumentative column, and maybe even look at having it published in a local paper. So that's a little bit, that's, there's some examples of what this might look like and some of the discussions that we're having. And then you see, of course, the box of equity that is connected to our comprehensive plan, to all the work that we're doing with training and working with our teachers around equity in the district. And relative to equity, we're examining as a committee, the instructional approaches in literacy that are effective in support of achievement for all types of learners. So in an educational context, what equity means is that we're going to respond to both academic and non-academic needs of children and provide them the support they need so that they can be successful. Of, of course, that means that we are also acknowledging that they're different and that they come to us with different needs. And I think of kindergarten, being in an elementary school myself, and consider that even before children begin kindergarten, they can become aware of systematic patterns and sounds in spoken language, manipulate sounds and words, they recognize words and break them apart. Some of you might remember when you were first reading to your children and teaching them to read, you kind of saw how that, the emergence of literacy through them. They learn the relationship with things down, but not all children come into kindergarten with these skills in place, and some need more support than others as they begin to develop as emerging readers. So that's where equity comes in. It gives us the opportunity to look at our practices around literacy and to support that. And I gave the kindergarten example, but certainly that applies in K to twelve. Anyone who works in schools knows that students arise with different needs. And some have experienced trauma, others are learning English for the first time, others may be just reading below grade level. And it follows that our students will need different things in order to thrive and meet their full potential. So that's why equity really plays such an important part in, in all that we're working on here. And then that last box, Dr. Vates referred to literacy as a critical foundation. And that does recognizing that literacy is a foundational skill that you must be, you need to be successful across content areas. Essentially, PDE and the PA Literacy Plan identifies that in the twenty-first century, you need to be able to read and write and communicate at high levels to be successful. You need to be able to construct meaning from across multiple sources, and you need to be able to communicate ideas orally and in writing. And so those are kind of three key areas that we think of when we think of you, literacy as a critical foundation. And another reason why we also chose social studies to be a part of, a part of this process. Next slide.
And so our, this slide represents the four components of year one that lead up to our developing a vision. We, first, we look at the status of our current resource, including the course selection, opportunities at the high school, and we look at standards and look at our students' performance against those standards, both state, local, and also industry standards. And then in addition to that, we look at what kinds of standards we want to impact our work going forward. We, of course, use the Pennsylvania State Standard because we're accountable to those. However, many of those standards, the social study standards are, I don't know, fifteen years old or so. And so we look at other national organizations and standards that can update and inform our current work. We engage in a quite a bit of professional development with the team and to help bring everybody to the same understandings about what is best practice right now in their research. And we do that through, and then through a number of ways, attending conferences, bringing in speakers. If we weren't in COVID, it might involve visiting classrooms. But we're, we're finding other ways to bring professional development into our team. And also, Dr. G is going to talk a little bit about the lit review and how we're bringing reading and those areas into our review. And then finally, the final task for this year is that the curriculum review team makes recommendations for the direction our curriculum, both ELA and social studies should go as we rewrite and develop next year and, and look at resources. So our timeline, we gathered our team from, we had our principals recommend folks and recruited them in the fall. And once we were settled back into hybrid and on a roll, we started meeting. In January, we gave an overview of the process and began looking at our courses and took status of our current curriculum. In February, we took a deep dive into some of our performance assessment data. We looked at cohort data, we looked at our students' achievement against eligible content from state standards, we looked at performance of a subgroup, disaggregated subgroup. And our teachers studied the data, made notes about the data, and then made some inferences about how that information should impact our teaching and curriculum development going forward. March and April was all about professional development, and Dr. G will talk about that in, in detail in the next slide, so I'll jump over. In May, we will begin to take, we've already started this in our last professional development session, but we'll begin just to document what it is that we believe is our vision for, for ELA and social studies going forward, of one that encompasses and integrates deeper learning and culturally proficient teaching in the work. In June and July, we expect, because we have a later start, that we'll do some summer work, continue finalizing the report and also selecting rubrics that will, or creating rubrics that will help us to evaluate resources for piloting. And now back to Dr. G.
So the committee has met for seven sessions, we meet again this week for eighth, eighth session. And as described earlier, we started off with our curriculum review introduction at the beginning. We spent about two months on data, and then we moved into professional development, which we felt was really key in, in helping develop the capacity of our teachers to be able to really support the, the decision-making process that we need to go through. And we really needed to get everyone, we have fifty people involved in this, kind of on this, on the same track, on the, on the same page as to what we believe, what our beliefs are, what our shared vision is. And so we, we knew the professional development was key, that's part of that. So we started after introducing the curriculum review process to partner with some professors, instructors from the area universities who presented to our teachers. We also had sixteen of our teachers attend Teachers College Reading and Writing Project sessions on a Saturday in March. This was honestly a fantastic opportunity because there were over a hundred sessions focused just on reading and writing. It's the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. So examples were supporting multilingual learners, learners using nonfiction texts, deepening comprehension for young readers through Read Aloud, reading to build and apply knowledge. These were just some, some great examples of some sessions. Our teachers were then asked to bring back information from those, those sessions. And we debriefed, had an opportunity to look at how that information could impact our own curriculum review and what professional practices were represented in the presentation that we needed to consider as we started to think about what teaching and learning, ELA, literacy should look like in Happer-Horsham, and what resources we might have identified from some of those workshops that we should take a deeper look at. You could see as, as we move along in this, that we, it's important to highlight the Hanover Literature Review. We, we partnered with Hanover, we've done our, we did our climate survey with Hanover a few years ago. And so they're an important part of this process because as part of the curriculum review process, a literature review is necessary in order to provide the committee with guidance and literature to support the development of our shared vision and goals in year one. So as part of this process, we worked with Hanover Research to identify research questions and a focus for literature review, the literature review based on the areas of focus we described earlier. Those four buckets of equity, student achievement, and literacy as a critical foundation. The, it was in deeper learning. So we focused on those areas, and, and Hanover is actually just recently in receipt. They did complete a literature review and best practices report that identifies research-based practices that teachers can use to innovate instruction, be more culturally proficient, and promote equity for all students. So this, this report includes a deep dive into the latest research and will be really helpful in, in helping support our work as, as we move into the summer. So we're excited about that. Next slide. This is kind of, this is, this is the, what, when we're finished with year one and we move on to year two, this is what next year might look like as we move on. And so you'll see the curriculum outcomes and assessment will start to define K to twelve skills and competencies and course-specific outcomes using that shared vision. We'll, we'll begin some curriculum mapping, developing curriculum maps, including scope and sequence. We'll look at some resources that we might want to start looking at and, and evaluation, identifying whether we want to pilot. We would likely pilot something and selecting resources for recommended adoption towards the towards the end of year two. And then, you know, the key part of this, which is why, you know, it was mentioned earlier that this is a few-year process, is that then we move into providing professional development to our teachers to support whatever we, we decide that we want to utilize and as part of our ELA curriculum. So that, that's a really important part, so that we can have that guaranteed implementation that I discussed earlier. So we're, we're, we'll be excited to move into year two once we get there. But just to give you a highlight of what that might look like. So thank you for the opportunity to share an update on the ELA curriculum review. We'll continue to share updates with the curriculum committee and the board at the superintendent's discretion. And we certainly thank you for your time and the opportunity. There's some really dedicated teachers on this committee, educators, literacy specialists, administrators, who are really energized about this work and excited about the opportunity. So we thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. G and Dr. Vape. Does anybody have any questions for them in the board?
Thank you for the presentation.
So then we move on to public comment. So this is the time for any members of the public wishing to make a comment on an agenda item. Anyone who wishes to make a comment can raise your hand using the raise hand function in Zoom or by pressing star nine on your phone. When you are given the opportunity to speak, please state your name, address, and municipality of residence, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any members of the public wishing to make a comment about agenda item?
I do not see any raised hands at this time, Madam President.
Okay. So now let's move on to the review of the minutes from April 19th Legislative Action Meeting. They are attached there. If you have any discrepancies, you reach out and let us know. There are no items for consideration today. So now we move to the public comment, general public comment section. Again, if there's any members of the public wishing to make a comment, please raise your hand using the raise hand function or by hitting star nine on your phone. When given the opportunity to speak, please state your name, address, and municipality of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any members of the public wishing to make a comment? Okay, I do not.
I do not see any at this time.
So let's move, we are now Dr. Everslog.
Thank you, Madam President. I have some comments for the public and the board. So thank you for giving me a few minutes. I want to start by congratulating Haverhill Horsham High School senior Brianna Rios, who's been named the Eastern Center for Arts and Technology Student of the Month. Brianna has excelled both at the high school and in the culinary arts program at Eastern. Her culinary arts instructor says that Brianna is an exceptional student with a great deal of drive and ambition. She has certainly made us proud at, for, made the district proud. And Brianna will be attending Temple University in the fall to study public health and nutrition. So kudos to Brianna. Parents, guardians, and caregivers are invited to join the next, be a part of the conversation session on Tuesday, May 11th, from 7:00 to 8:30. The session that's titled Parenting on Your Feet: Tools for Talking with Teens focuses on helping adults talk to teens and respond to issues of substance use. Information and signups are on the school district website, and we encourage participation. I'd like to make a few comments just about the public health metrics and the status of COVID-19 in the district. So just have a few things to say about both of those, if you don't mind. The community metrics have declined the last two weeks, which is good news. After three weeks prior, I've seen them steadily increase. The positivity rate in Montgomery County is at 6.9%. The incident rate is at 133.1%, while currently trending in the right direction. There has been a general plateau over the past six weeks, and we are higher overall than we were in mid-March. So we still have work to do. This did not meet the projection of where we shared in early March, largely attributable to the variants that have emerged. Even as more and more people 16 older, 16 years and older have been vaccinated, the numbers still have been relatively flat. So we are hoping, and the latest projections are that they, that that slight decline that we've seen recently will continue. In school, we do continue unfortunately to see cases. Every case is communicated via letter and posted on the website's COVID-19 dashboard. With the county guidelines for determining close contacts being what they are, we are seeing a high number of quarantines. This, this past week, at one point, we faced a high of 182 people that were needing to quarantine. The numbers on the dashboard are higher than we would like. And while, while that is the case, please be assured that we are strictly adhering to the guidance of the Montgomery County Office of Public Health in determining appropriate response to these cases. If case counts in a particular building exceed the indicated threshold, there are consultations with the Office of Public Health to, to determine how the school should respond. And at no point have we ignored a public health recommendation or kept a school or classroom opening, continue in person, if the Office of Public Health had recommended a temporary switch to virtual instruction. There have been cases where we've had to transition a particular elementary classroom to virtual instruction for a short amount of time. But the, there have been very few school closures recently in result of these consultations. Through this, our testing out of quarantine program has been successful and has resulted in students being able to return to school sooner than their original length of quarantine. Data both here and in the surrounding area indicates that elementary age students are now more likely to contract the virus from being a close contact, contact than their adolescent age students. This is a recent trend and is opposite from what we had seen, trends that we had seen earlier. And that too is attributable to the presence of variants, which are both spreading rapidly and impacting younger students more. Vaccinations continued to be more readily available. Good news last week, as a result of a great community collaborative effort, we were able to hold a vaccination clinic at the high school that successfully administered the first dose of the Pfizer vaccine to all interested students 16 and older. Roughly 400 vaccines were administered by, at the clinic that day by the Wellness Pharmacy Services in Horsham. I'd like to thank the pharmacy, our high school administrative team, Representative Stevens, the many parent and student volunteers who helped make the vaccination clinic happen. It's likely that the vaccine will soon be approved for 12 to 15-year-olds. Clinics and county vaccination sites are going to be offering walk-in services very soon. The county has two super, super sites that they're opening, one at Montgomery Mall, one at the King of Prussia Mall, in which walk-ins will be taken. So we do expect when the 12 to 15-year-olds are approved soon, that the vaccine is even more readily available. And we do encourage eligible students to secure the vaccine as soon as possible. And while the CDC has been relaxing requirements societally, most of those relaxed guidelines are for adults who are fully vaccinated and around others who are also fully vaccinated. So I need to kindly remind everyone that the Health and Safety Plan that we present to the board that's approved and also made public is really what drives the conduct of our employees, students, and guests while on property. As a public institution, we're operating with most of our students not being vaccinated. Therefore, our conduct around them is prioritized around the health and safety. So we know that the CDC has said there are situations when adults can no longer need to mask when they're around other adults. At this point, we're operating under the same guidelines that we have with our most recently adopted Health and Safety Plan. So as there is emerging and changing guidance around masking or distancing by the CDC or other entities in the future, we, we will process that information, channel it through our Health and Safety Committee, and make revisions to the Health and Safety Plan as needed. And when those changes occur, we'll communicate those changes to our families and students and staff. And so we can, we can expect that there's going to be a slight lag in that process after guidance is released. You know, there'll be some processing to ensure what, how that guidance should be best applied in the school setting. So we obviously will continue to prioritize health and safety. And in the meantime, our guidelines will remain in place for strict masking and distancing guidelines for the plan. Okay, shifting gears of two more quick announcements. We're announcing that effective May 17th, that's our next public meeting of the board. The board will begin holding in-person public meetings on the two meetings per month that we meet as, as an entire board. This includes both the action legislative meetings and the work sessions. These meetings will be held at the high school auditorium and will be live streamed and recorded. Public attendees are welcome in person. They will be expected to sign in and file health and safety guidelines that are in place, including masking and distancing. The public is welcome to join the meetings either in person or watch via live stream. Community members can share comments with the board through either in-person comments or via electronic communication to the board sent in advance of the meeting. We will post the details of, of this change about meetings on the website and also send out a community, a community-wide communication outlining those details. And finally tonight, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And on behalf of the board and administration, we'd like to extend a warm appreciation for our teachers and the incredible, credible work they've been doing, particularly throughout this extremely difficult school year. This year, we've seen teachers who have taught from their homes, they've taught from the school buildings, and they've instructed students who are in multiple locations, some at home, some in school, often at the same time, they're instructing students in multiple locations. It's been a very challenging year for our teachers. As the instructional delivery model and expectations for them have changed multiple times throughout the year, our teachers have responded admirably to the challenge and have maintained their passion for helping our students. We have witnessed a lot of Hatter pride this year, and I especially appreciate that pride and professionalism that I've seen from our teachers. Haverhill Horsham teachers, please know that we appreciate you. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Everslog. Is there any board members wishing to make any comments?
Just wanted to echo Scott's comments about Teacher Appreciation Week and thank the teachers for all their, all their work, as Scott said, and the pivoting back and forth and all the work that they've been doing has been outstanding. So just wanted to thank them as well.
I just want to thank Scott for a very brief and concise report. And thank the teachers for all they do.
Ms. Schultz.
Yeah, I definitely want to echo the echoes. Thank you so much, all, all of the teachers. And I just have two brief points I want to make. Wednesday is our policy meeting. So I think the whole board and any other parties that need to be there have been invited, but please public come on and join the Zoom meeting. That will definitely be on Zoom on seven on Wednesday. And then I also have some great news to share from the Food Services Department as part of like the Wellness Committee report, if you would. The free meals to all children, zero through 18 in the, in the district, in the area, will continue. I think in large part of the USDA program that continues, it'll continue through the summer and potentially even into next year, maybe even all of next year. I think that that's the, the plan. So that's really very exciting. So we'll let you know how that goes and when that's, that's, that plan is in place. But even more exciting is what's worked, what is in the process of being planned with Mr. Reichert, Mr. Mrs. Oldy, Ms. Murphy, and Ms. Swire from the Food Services Department is an actual summer meal program for all students in the Haverhill Horsham School District, which we've never had before. We were just never qualified. We didn't meet the, the standards to, to do that before. So with the, the new rules in place, that is going to be a resource for every family. And, and please stay tuned for more details to come. I believe that actually it involves a mobile unit, a mobile van, if you will, or some kind of, of food delivery to go to an area where people can come, so they don't have to travel to the school. So that is so exciting. And I wanted to thank everyone involved in the Food Services Department and Mr. Reichert, she's getting that done. I know that's been a, something that's been near and dear to all of our hearts for, for quite some time, especially Mr. Reichert. So I know he's not here right now, but I wanted to go on the record and say thank you. So please stay tuned.
Thank you. And I'd also just like to echo everyone's sentiment of thanking the teachers for all of the hard work they put in this year. You've gone above and beyond, you know, anything we could have ever expected of you. So we really do appreciate you. And if there are no more comments, then that is the end of our meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I'll second that.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you and have a good evening.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Dr. Taylor? I'm sorry, Dr. Taylor?
I unmute myself. I'm sorry. Yes.